Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the, uh, some rain and some cooler weathers. We thank you for all the men and women who serve the citizens of Cherokee County at this county level, state level, and our federal level. I pray that as this meeting goes into session today, that you will be with all those folks serving those in the county. Give us all guidance and wisdom to make the decisions that are consistent with your will. Please use us to glorify you with all that we do. I pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Blessed is to be in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Still have very much time. I want to perhaps get some. So I forwarded you guys the contracts for the greater deal. It would be to refinance the seven sandings and finance three cap motorators. On that original email, it states the dates on when the payments will end. Make our next payment $605,920, which is close to $20,000 less per year with all three new machines that add the year to the seven machines we currently have.
Does add here, but it also brings up payment now.
That was the main goal, was payment the same or whatever.
Do you get any better answer from my [inaudible 00:01:21]?
We're gonna sign this paper, then I'll get a better answer. The only tab is where one of the chairperson signs.
It's all part of our rollout plan. I'm going to make a motion that we, um, explain the financing.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are we too quick for you, Doug?
No, you're fine. I'm on.
Your motion, motion passed two to one. Do you have any suggestions on a different rollout plan for our graders?
Well, I just didn't, I just hate to see us move that many, and, you know, I just soon try to buy one outright and that kind of stuff, sort of swap them all out, rotate them that quick.
Or rotate in three.
I know, but I mean, we could overhaul tons of, we can, I just not fair with it.
Anything else?
See over there?
Yeah.
No, I do not. We can move on to the enterprise. Let's look at that one. Did you already sign that one? This is for the refinance of the seven. This is finance for the three. Ken and Troy here with Enterprise. So let's dress up. The Enterprise deal, he'll be able to explain old Sourcewell contracts and such, but that's where other counties use it, cities, counties, anything governmental. The road and bridge needs it because it allows us to make payments and then do a rollout with current vehicles instead of purchasing an item which we don't have the money for in our limited budget. Do you want to explain, Ken, how the... I know Sourcewell's been talked to you guys plenty of times, but I don't know how much you actually... Do you have Sourcewell questions and such?
Does the clerk have copies of those contracts?
They will have.
Not yet. We just signed it, Larry.
I know, but I mean, will they get a copy?
Always do.
Okay.
I agree. You have the clerk sign it, and then she's gonna make copies.
Thank you.
Would you like us to come up?
Sure. I mean, have a seat. Feel free to pull us there.
That sounds good. Absolutely.
Good morning, Mr. Jeff. Thank you so much for having us today. I guess to kind of kick us off a little bit, um, and really before we get too deep in the weeds, just wanted to thank you guys, one, for having us, but thank Cody, the sheriff's team. Um, we've been working together for a couple of years now. Um, and the reason I'm here is I was the one on the front end that brought up the commission initially, started the partnership, and then Troy's come in and he manages the partnership from here. Um, so just wanted to thank the team. It's been, we've had some really strong relationships over the last couple of years and just a lot of time that they've given us. Certainly appreciative of that. Um, I know a couple new commissioners since we started the partnership, was there any primary questions or, um, any areas that you wanted us to focus on in today's conversation?
Can you give a really quick recap for Jack and Fett who just came on this year?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, well, just from a very high level standpoint, and again, kind of the conversation that we had initially, we're part of the Enterprise Mobility family, so probably familiar with us from the Enterprise Rent-A-Car standpoint. Um, on our side, the fleet management side, we essentially leverage that infrastructure. We've got a whole bunch of tools, resources, people all throughout the country. And we leverage that to help entities like yours with what we consider medium-sized fleets. Our niche is really 20 to 300 vehicles. Average client has about 50 to 100 vehicles in the fleet. So when we think about that from a governmental standpoint, even some of our larger agencies, such as the Unified Government or Shawnee County, we break that down per department. They all fall really in that core niche. So helping entities like yours save money, operate more efficiently and effectively. Again, kind of told you the roles, role structure standpoint, mine's more on the front end, getting things started. Troy's more on from an ongoing management standpoint. And really, at the end of the day, all of our meetings are designed around your budget year. So that's really joyful, one, to do an annual platter review to show what we've done over the last year, you know, financially and operationally, but also to come out on an ongoing basis, design around your budget year to help Cody and the team, the sheriff's team, you know, separating those two out and helping them from a budget standpoint prepare, and then getting in and out of the vehicles at the right time. We haven't replaced any Enterprise vehicles yet, but we're getting really close. And when we go, and that's really our main philosophy, is cycling these vehicles at the right time and at the lowest cost of ownership. We've got all different ways that you can pay for the vehicles. Cody mentioned Sourcewell, and that allows you to piggyback off all the different pieces. Um, but really, our general philosophy is to get out at the right time, and that's why we have those in-person meetings and have the relationship and partnership type structure. We've got a lot of flexibility. The sheriff's side's gonna look a little different than the road and bridge side or any other department, right? So we can really customize that, and we've got a ton of different entities, you know. I've got entities like yours, such as the Unified Government, the Shawnee County, Ellis County, Pittsburgh, Crawford, that only use us for that vehicle side. Or we got other entities such as Lynn County, Pony County, Russell County, Marion County, CDL here in Tattler, not too far away, that use us for everything. They use us for maintenance. They use us for fuel, telematics, insurance. So we can really customize down to the department level and down to the vehicle level what your need is. So a lot packed in there. We're happy to dive into the weeds. Troy's got some stuff. Um, so the last thing that I'll say, just from a high-level standpoint, is really the... What we've leveraged up to this point from a financial structure standpoint is our equity lease model. Okay? And I'll be honest with you, every single county I partner with leverages the equity lease. And I cover the whole state, against about half of Missouri. Um, and with the equity lease, it allows us to reduce the budget, do more with less, and get the fleet coming in and out at the right time, as I mentioned. Um, so with this, essentially, it's a bank finance. So if we take a $50,000 truck, we fund it to a remaining balance of $20,000, and then we sell for $35,000, you get that equity of $15,000. We can get out early. We can extend out longer. It just gives a lot of flexibility. You know, over the last five, six, seven years, COVID hit and all that stuff, the resale market went crazy, right? And now the resale market's settling a little bit, but the government incentives are going up. So that's way into the weeds, but that's what we're looking at on an ongoing basis. And I will tell you, the sheriff's side's gonna look a heck of a lot different than the road and bridge side. And with our road and bridge departments, there's a lot of opportunity, okay? You guys have, right now, 17 vehicles. We've got five on lease for the road and bridge side. We're recommending that, and again, this is just a recommendation, just initial glance, 10 vehicles because their average age is 2002, okay? And really, from our standpoint, if we could get them into newer, better, safer, more efficient vehicles, that is zero-dollar savings opportunity, but we go from a 2002 average age to a two-year-old average age. There's some value that comes with that for Cody's department, and that's really what, you know, we're working towards. And we've kind of done, and that was the initial thought, was we get the five vehicles out of the gate, kind of more of a test drive, see how, is all the stuff that I said actually coming true, right? And I believe that we do have a really good partnership in place. So very long winded there. Hopefully, that gives you kind of a high-level overview. Um, Troy, do you want to jump in a little bit, or any questions that you guys?
Yeah, Ken said a lot about what we do, but I just wanted to paint the picture as well. Um, you know, some of the benefits that we bring is we're brand agnostic, right? We could go with GM, Ram, Ford. We could, we could go with any one of those manufacturers, and that's where the benefit comes in, because now I'm able, in my job, to put all of these together and find the best pricing for y'all at the end of the day. Um, I'm a visual person, so how a lease does work is if you have a $30,000 vehicle, we fund it down to a residual, so you don't ever pay for the entire vehicle. And I know, as Cody said earlier, the budget is big for him, and he doesn't have the type of money that he needs to replace all his vehicles. So that's, that's some of the benefit that we bring. We fund it down to a residual, fund it down to like $10,000 residual remaining. At the end of the lease, we want to sell that vehicle for $15,000, $20,000. We take the $10,000 residual out of that. Now he has $10,000 to put back into his new vehicle, so the cost of the new vehicle goes down. And we plan to do that every year, and now we're saving you money, and now your lease payment gets lower. You borrow less money from Enterprise, and you have a new or safer, more fuel-efficient fleet every year, and then you don't have all that operating cost on the backend like you do right now with all the vehicles.
And that's really what we looked at on the front end, is shifting from some of the high operational expenses, with major repairs and non-preventative maintenance, and that's happening with the 2002 average age, right? And our fuel economy isn't as good, and shifting some of that over to the capital side, and then capitalizing on the equity when we go to sell those vehicles. And we haven't sold a tremendous amount of vehicles yet, and that's where on the road and bridge side, once we start to cycle those vehicles out, you're gonna see a lot more equity coming back. And then that's where we can kind of offset some of our costs moving forward, put that into an equipment reserve, bought it if that's okay, and start to reduce the budget overall.
I would speak whenever he said 17 vehicles. Now we're down to 15. Two of them's died since he's gotten those numbers. We, clerk's office needed one to pull for the election office. I think we have six trucks now that can actually pull the trailer, which is, gets to be hard by the time, whenever you're on asphalt and such. So basically, whenever they're dying, they're dead because they're so, so wore out. Everything's wore out on them. They're just not worth putting the money back in. The two that I'm talking about that died, they're not worth the money back. And on my budget side, buying outright, yeah, that's great. I'd love to buy outright, but I don't know how that's ever gonna happen with budgets going down.
So if you get, if you buy three vehicles outright, and let's say those three vehicles, $30,000 each, right, goes into three vehicles, we can stretch it out and do more vehicles with less money.
And one, and one thing I'll add, you know, at any given point in time, you can sell funding for the whole vehicle. We're not a leasing company. We're a fleet management company. So we have entities that will roll liquidate and put a large down payment down when that equity comes back. We have entities that want to budge capital and the entity is possible and not in the vehicles and use the equity at 100%. And then we have entities, a few, but some, that essentially pay cash. We do leave it on our books for a dollar balance because we're handling all the license entitlements and registrations as they have experienced. But any way that you can imagine paying for that vehicle, we do, we have a solution for it. And that's where we want to work together to help you accomplish your goals from a budget standpoint and just a financial perspective in general. Um, another piece, kind of jumping back to the acquisition front. Troy mentioned we have every make, every model, every option. We're working with the sheriff right now on the Tahos. The Tahoe's been really tough over the last couple of years from the, it's the police Tahoe or the Pursuit Tahoe model, and we've secured allocation every year, and we've helped them from that standpoint. So through our factory order channel, that we can order direct from the manufacturers, that brings a lot of value, one, from a cost perspective, but two, from ordering the vehicles at the right time and ensuring, and the sheriff's in a really good position right now because of some of those things that we did. And some of those vehicles, if we start to cycle those out, are gonna sell for a tremendous amount. But same, and the other piece is when we factory order, we do keep the local dealerships involved, and we deliver those to the local dealerships whenever possible. So there is a local piece to that perspective. But we've got used vehicles. We've got dealer inventory. We've got pool vehicles. We've got aftermarket pool vehicles. So again, similar to the financing options, we have, any way that you can imagine getting a vehicle, we have the solution for it. We certainly recommend you factory order wherever possible, but we have every option available.
But he knows what the city's budget. We don't have that much in the budget for equipment for vehicles this year, but there is some after half of the greater payment, so.
What I wanted to do is work forward with them, figure out what I can do with a couple, like I have a couple vehicles through Enterprise right now that really aren't fitting our needs. Hopefully, there's enough equity in those that they can help us get out of those and replace those with two vehicles that are heavy-duty, like F-550s, for example, or whatever, you know, that size of vehicle. So then, every day, we're not using 3500s that are getting wore out and decreasing their value, getting the guts pulled out of them. I need to upgrade those, so that's what I would like to look for, or work forward to. But I don't want to do it if it's gonna be a waste of time.
Sounds like a good plan, as long as it's affordable.
And then we have to think long-term. You have people like a guy, like the vehicle mechanic that we currently use for sheriff's department and ourselves to replace that person. I don't think you're gonna replace that person with as much care as that person has now, which you need. And then if you do, it's gonna cost more money than what we're at now. So in the future, I see that that position dissolving and all the mechanic work on that end of it, on the vehicle end of it, being hired out, where that's where they offer that as well in that program, which I know the sheriff already uses the gas system, right, through Enterprise, whatever that is?
Wax.
Yes.
Cards?
Yeah. So they've already swapped to that, let us use the other tank, which is great. But just saying, like, that's why that was done, because they saw foreseeable issue and went ahead and handled that part. But I'm telling you now, within a few years, you're gonna have that issue of being able to work on the fleet. If you don't have a good mechanic, all those 2002 vehicles are gonna get even more expensive.
Yeah, I think that, that brings up a really good point to your budget conversation of what we often see. I mean, and a lot of commission meetings and a lot of council meetings, and what we often see is there's an endless budget from an operational perspective, and we have to fix those vehicles. We're gonna continuously repair those, and our fuel costs are higher than they could be, and that operating budget's essentially impossible because we can't close those out, right? And with this program, yes, there's going to be more capital spend at some point if you've got 17 new vehicles on the road and they're coming in and out. But the operational side comes down, the equity goes up, and it's usually a breakeven or a cost advantage, and they have a better tool, and it's safer and more efficient and more effective and all those different things. So that's, that's the general philosophy. It is shifting buckets, right? Right now, probably not, because we only have a lot of vehicles on lease. But from that perspective, if we do have the full 17 or whatever it be, 15, whatever it is, there's gonna be some shift in buckets. But I think from that perspective, that the next piece that comes in there is if Cody's truck, if one of his trucks goes down, or two that just happened, and two more go down, because it's inevitable. It's a tool, right? It's gonna wear out at some point in time. And when that happens, then we gotta go out of stock. And when we go out of stock, it's gonna cost more than if we're factory ordering. So there's additional savings to being proactive and selling those when they're fully loaded. So from that perspective, that's where we try to have that proactive strategy and have that planning. And we can certainly put this on paper and let Cody bring that to you, but that's the general philosophy.
I'm just making sense to me, just staying within the budget.
No, I just like seeing it on paper and, uh, and, uh, the cost of it and everything, you know. It's, uh, I'm kind of old school with all that, and I just... Sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. I just want to see it on paper.
Yeah, would, would that be, um, one thought that I have is would it make sense for us to put together two models? And the first model, just being what Cody just said there, just kind of like, worst-case scenario, we need to get the right tool for the job and get that kind of a minimal, we'll work within the budget and just kind of show, hey, with our budget, this is what we have. This is what we're recommending. And then option B is, hey, if we replace those 10 additional vehicles that are average age of 2002, what would this look like from a big-picture standpoint, reducing the operational expenses, capitalizing on the equity, and bringing all 10 of those onto the lease model? Is, would that be what you guys want to see to kind of make a good financial decision?
I think so. And again, working hand-in-hand with Cody, because he knows what his budget is for that particular...
100%, and it'll be his vehicle. We'll customize him with his vehicles. He selects the options, the features, the aftermarket equipment, all that stuff. We'll work together and make sure it's exactly the tool that he needs, and then we'll bring those two options to you and A, B, or C, do nothing, right? So that's what we, you know, that's what we want to do on a regular basis. We want to partnership with you guys, and it is a very collaborative partnership relationship type structure. So we'll put some pen and paper and see what we can do.
Sure.
Appreciate you coming. Spend your time with us. We've prepared the next, again, the item, the NRP resolution for us. We're going to table it. They're coming to just put it in our hands. We're gonna table it, give us an opportunity to read it and compare it with the existing plan, and we'll address that next week. We're going to be on the property deed transfer settlement.
When you say table till next week, do you mean this Friday or September 8th?
After.
That's right.
Yes. Thank you.
I mean, the answer to that, we have to publish for three weeks on it, to dispose of it. So that's, that's what we need to do, to have a motion to publish. For disposition of real property to the Ambulance Association, publish that at the center of the meeting and vote on it at the end of that.
So the publication will specify what?
The publication will specify that this property is being, um, gifted to the Ambulance Association, published up once a week for three consecutive weeks. If anybody wants to object to it, they can file a petition opposing it. It has to have 2% of signatures from people in the county to stop that from going through. And then it has to be unanimous vote by the board to do that for the pass. Did you catch all that?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so this is very much like when we, I think you were involved in giving the Ford Explorer to like the Columbus Fire Department, basically the same process. We have to file here. So, or follow here. So we have to publish once a week for three consecutive weeks that Cherokee County is going to be gifting this tract of land to the Cherokee County Ambulance Association, right? We'll name it. There'll be a public hearing at the end of that three-week period. The public can contest that by the provision set out in the statute. I believe it's a petition signed by 2% of the electorate, and then it has to pass by unanimous vote of the board.
Will that publication announce the hearing date?
Yes, so we need to set that. I would do it four weeks from today, just to be... I would do it four weeks, four weeks, I mean...
I would make a motion that we publicize three consecutive ads in the official newspaper of our intentions to have a public hearing on September 22nd for the purpose of taking a vote to gift land to the Ambulance Association per the survey that was recently submitted.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion for unanimous.
Do you need anything from me, Jake, on that?
I don't believe so. I got the legal. That's what I need right now.
Okay, thank you.
Can Cody step out?
I'm in the clerk's office.
Are you our EPA?
Yep. You ready for us now?
What's the subject?
It's just an update of everything that's happened in Cherokee County in the past fiscal year.
Yeah, go ahead and come up.
Okay. Got to pull up one of those chairs, Alex.
Yeah.
So I brought a packet for each one of you with some information.
Thank you.
First thing on the docket, I want to do, introduce Alex Shepard here. So we've had a lot of turnover recently in the EPA. There's been a lot of retirements. And Dan Kellerman, who was in charge of the residential portion of our work, retired and Alex has stepped into his role. So Alex is going to be taking on all the residential yards that we're going to be working on. He's the lead, I'm the alt. I'm the, I'm the lead for the mine waste portion. So I just wanted to introduce him to the council. You have anything to say, Alex?
Yeah, I'm working in Galena and Baxter Springs right now, doing that residential remediation. And it says on there, we had about fifty properties this year, hoping to pick up the pace. The rain, of course, delays all construction work, as you guys know. So yeah, hoping to maybe get like a hundred done next year between Galena and Baxter Springs. And we're also upping access. So like, what I really want to do is try to get every property sampled. I think that's more important than anything, spread awareness about if you have one in your yard. So we're leaving some access agreements, like at the Baxter Springs City Hall, residents can go in and sign up right there. And we're also trying to set up to have some up at Galena City Hall as well. Of course, you know, I'm sure you've written it before, but everything's free of charge and everything. So we're just trying to provide a service to the residents and let them, you know, we're going to be there for, for them if they want us. And if they don't, then they don't, so.
Where are you getting the field? Last time you told me where you're thinking. Oh, where are you getting the field?
Yeah, our contractor in residential lease has access agreements with different property owners around between Galena and Baxter Springs. So right now, they've got a source right by Riverpin. Property owner, I think, once put upon to their property, so they have a bunch of soil they don't want. They're paying, I'm not paying them for it, of course. So our contractor kind of finds those sources. There's sometimes property owners will reach out to us and we'll pass that along to our contractor.
I'm assuming you obviously test that?
Yes. Yeah, we sample that every four hundred, every fourth of an acre is sampled to make sure that it's not, you know, we're putting clean soil back.
We have a set standard for what is allowed to be put back in a yard, as well as for mine waste properties as well. There's a little bit of a difference for residential soils versus non residential soils, but they're fairly similar on most of the analytical.
Yeah, and we test it for like nutrients as well to try to make sure it can actually sustain, you know, the sod that we put down.
The soil was contaminated in some of those yards or something. Where, where do you, how do you, where do you handle that? What do you do with that soil?
It's going to our repository that Thomas has a contact for. It's early bird repository kind of north of Trees there.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's just off of Tenth, Tenth Street by the former town of Trees. It's actually, you can see it in the big picture there. There's a big yellow kind of section there on that second page of the, the big sheets there. And that is what we are going to construct over time, a repository of all of the contaminated soils. Yeah, we call that early bird repository.
How many acres is that?
I'm, I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Pretty large.
It's, it's really large. I believe we had, the last survey we did, we had approximately one point eight million cubic yards worth of space. So quite a bit. It's going to be fairly large. And I don't believe we'll reach capacity of that, at least for another four years.
I think the idea will be to cap in, put grass over it and we make grazing land out of it.
Yeah, they're still, they're still actively selling chat out of that location as well, Williams Diversified is, so. But in that packet on the very front there, first thing, I have both mine and Alex's business card. So if you guys ever need to get ahold of us, you have our information. I included the door hanger because you had brought it up the last time we were here, that people had called the number and weren't getting response back. I believe I fixed that situation now. I've had a conversation with the contractor, supposed to be maintaining that. So that number on those door hangers should work now. They should be getting called back. But like Alex said, we do have a spot in Baxter Springs right now at the city hall that people can get access agreements assigned for sampling. We're actually going to drop off some prepaid envelopes as well so that they can just send them off. Or they can leave them in the city hall if they'd like. And we're kind of working at the moment to get a solidified location, Galena, for people to go to, to sign up and get access as well.
The one that can pay for a sample.
The, uh, the contractors right now, they're, they're, they have sample agreements and a lot of people have been coming out when they come and work at properties and they sign them up and fill it out and they bring it to our third party contractor who does the sampling. And then the next portion on there, I have a sheet here that kind of has a breakdown of everything that's happened this past fiscal year or so. Forty seven properties so far, which we have twenty one in Baxter Springs and twenty six in Galena. Currently, they're still working in Galena. They're not in Baxter Springs at the moment, but once the auction year starts, hopefully sometime in the next few months, we're waiting on a, we're waiting on a signed SSC from the state till we're at that auction year. Total mine waste, approximately three hundred and seventy two thousand ninety two cubic yards or around four hundred and eighty three thousand seven hundred and twenty tons. That includes all the residential soils as well as the mine waste soils that have been removed in this fiscal year. And so I, I broke down here currently for you guys as well underneath there what's currently going on. We have the residential soils contract for both Baxter Springs and Galena. We have a cooperative agreement remedial action for a tributary to Tar Creek. That's located immediately west of former town of Trees. It's, uh, where, that's with the Quapaw tribe. So they're doing a, a cleanup there on the tributary. We have a remedial action for mine waste, which is west of Baxter Springs. That one's on Swally Avenue, just north of state line. And that's a fairly large area. It's not, it's three properties. They get access from Swally to all three properties. That's where they're finishing up that work right now. They're actually pretty much done excavating the waste and, and building the repositories that are going to be on site there. It's mostly just bringing it backfill and restoring the property so that they drain positively. We also have a remedial action for abandoned rail lines. That one was in Galena. That's the one that's on Southeast Ninetieth and Blackjack Road. They've actually completed that to the point where all that's left now is to seed and revegetate. The seeding window doesn't open up until September first, so it's kind of, there's kind of breaking up clumps of dirt and making sure it's ready for that seeding window. And then we also have the contract with Williams Diversified with the early bird repository. So they manage all of our waste, all of our contractors bring it in, they track the weight of it and they make sure it's put in the right location as we build that repository. Future remedial actions we have coming up, one of them is what the large drawings are there for you. We're calling that the Tar Creek piles. So it's going to be basically beginning the process of remediating Tar Creek here in Region Seven. It goes into Region Six in Oklahoma, so they have a portion of Tar Creek as well. We have a fairly small portion that needs to be remediated, pretty much from Highway one sixty six just off of Tenth to the state line. So, and then the other thing here that we have coming up, we have a cooperative agreement with the Cherokee County Health Department for health education. So we're working on that, hoping to get that awarded to the Cherokee County Health Department at the beginning of the new year, twenty sixth.
Does that include blood tests as well?
We don't, we don't provide funds for blood testing, but we, part of that is for supplies for outreach. But we can actually fund them for the testing itself. It's, it's kind of a.
It's a backdoor.
It's a weird legal situation with insurances and whatnot. I'm not exactly sure. It's, I'm kind of just a facilitator of that with the agreements team at the EPA. Kind of the one who works in between both the Cherokee County Health Department and the agreements team. But it's, it's for health education, both Baxter Springs and Galena. So we're hoping to get that awarded beginning of the new year. And then just a cou- couple of other things here for Cherokee County. We had a few removal actions this year, one of them in Galena that happened before we had our remedial contract in place. Otherwise, we would have had our remedial contract take care of that. And we also had one here in Columbus as well, and you can see the quantities for the cubic yards removed there. And currently, right now, we have a, I'm not exactly sure the total number of properties, but we have some removals going on in Weir as well, which is its own super fun site. Rachel wasn't able to make it. Her name's Rachel Palaio. She's the RPM for that. One of these times that I'm here, I'm hoping that she'll come and you guys can meet her at least because she's in charge of that super fun site. It's its own entity. They're kind of in the investigation phase to figure out a remedy and make a decision on how to treat the waste. There's a residential soils component there and there's also a smelter component as well. So I have some information down here. They're currently, they've remediated three properties through the removal program and I believe they have a few more to go. The O S E on site for that is Scott Cormer. So I left his email there. If you guys have any questions for him, you can shoot him an email. And then the other piece, and in these, underneath this, this list here, I just kind of included a site map. So you can see the location of our super fun site here in Cherokee County. And then kind of underneath that, it shows the relationship of that to the Missouri sites and the Oklahoma sites as well. It's pretty much this entire region in the tri-state area. And then these drawings here are for you guys to see what the planned work is for Tar Creek files. So that shows the rest, the excavation plan and the restoration plan.
Appreciate the effort you're making for communication. Very much.
Yeah, of course. If you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out or, you know, citizens reach out, of course.
Have we come out on Monday?
I haven't been out there yet. I've got a telephone call this week over your fault project.
Oh, yeah, from, uh, the property owner there on Swally, or is it on the one on Star?
Other farmers in the area that are using the same roads that you're using.
I believe that they were supposed, they, they requested it. I'm not sure if they went out and did it because they were unsure if it would make more sense to do it beforehand or not. But they were supposed to go out and do some maintenance on the road this Saturday when there were any trucks running, kind of help with doing the maintenance. But they said that if they did it beforehand, they weren't sure if it was going to washboard. It might be better to do it if there were trucks still running on it, so I'm not sure. I haven't spoken to them since Friday. But I'm out here this week, so.
We have your numbers.
Yep. You guys, you guys can call me. I think, I think you both have my email as well. So, yeah, if you guys ever need anything, just, just reach out to me. I'm, I'm pretty responsive, pretty quick, and I've been communicating with, with Cody as well quite a bit when I hear things. There was, there was an issue with the Quapaw, the Q S A, using unapproved toll routes. And I had to give him a call and let him know that, you know, it was reported to me that they were running over roads that they shouldn't be going over with specific coal birds. And I let him know that they need to stick to their approved toll routes, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Those, those packets are for you, and so if you guys need anything, just give us a call.
Okay.
Thank you. And I believe I sent you the information for our legal if you ever need it. Perfect. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
You too.
Sir, could you send me one of those packets on the evening?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Any business before our hearing? Are you here for the budget or something else?
I was here to say.
You're just here.
Yeah, between Enterprise and the hearing, so if there's anything you have of us, they'll be glad to answer.
I could use an executive session at some point. If we wanted to do that, I'd probably take fifteen and just come back at ten for that.
I want to move fifteen minute attorney client executive session to return at ten. Would you like a second?